I think it might roll call if I remember correctly.
That'll wake you up, huh?
Glish?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Ballick?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Stetson?
Here.
Woodrow? Peterson?
Here.
Thank you. That takes us to item three, which is swearing in of newly appointed board member Randy Glish. And I'll meet you right up in front of the tables here, Randy.
Go ahead, Randy.
So please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Randy Glish, having been elected or appointed to office of village board as a trustee.
I, Randy Glish, have been appointed to the village board as a trustee.
And to Oregon Council on Aging, by our EMS District Commission and Village School District Cooperation Committee.
Oregon Council on Aging, by our EMS District Commission and Village School District Cooperation Committee.
For the term ending April 2019.
For the term ending April 2019.
But not yet entered upon the duties thereof swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
But not yet entered upon the duties thereof swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Now you're stuck.
Okay, so that takes us to item four, public appearance. And item A, discussion with Molly Dillman and Tony Vidla, 220 Bethel Court, regarding sewer backup claim and possible board action. So if you'd like to come to the microphone, please. Welcome. So if you want to explain the situation, and we'll have questions and discussion, and have Jeff included also, please. Thanks, Molly.
Yep. So I think it was included in your packet, sort of the narrative of what happened.
Yes, yeah.
But essentially, the sewage started backing up into our basement. And when we had plumber, rotor, router come see what was going on, he discovered underneath the manhole that there was significant sludge, for lack of a better word, because we're close to dinnertime, underneath the street. And so it was our house affected, and then our neighbor behind us that were affected. And we lost a significant portion of things in the basement. Our basement was finished. And so our flooring, our drywall, all of that got ripped out.
Okay, so Jeff, did you want to make comments?
Yeah, so all these start off as unfortunate incidents, end us up at this location. That it occurred in like March 25th. And so our staff went out to look at it right away. Found that there was a blockage, or apparent blockage, in the manhole that was down in Walnut Street, which is what Bethel Court tees into. They went back, got the truck, and were able to jet up that line. And then, in the process, noticed probably the sign of roots, like we've talked about, roots, tree roots and stuff like that. And coming out with whatever debris was blocked behind it. So we believe it to be a root problem that was at that location. It's not uncommon. It does happen. And they were able to get things kind of open for them. And then, kind of the following, I think it was Monday, I think, is I went out there, Gary went out there, and we met with the residents. And Mr. Waite was actually, you were out of town, I believe. You'll hear from him in just a little bit on the next item. And, you know, as with all these, we provide them the sewer reimbursement policy and kind of the supporting information, and tell them to, you know, keep track of their costs and everything, but, you know, that here's the policy that we have. They, you know, subsequently did submit a claim for, I believe it's $23,354. We had, you know, we've kind of always been upfront. And I should say that actually both working with Molly and David has been very, they've been very cordial, very pleasant. It's really been, you know, it's been a good working relationship, considering the circumstances that they had to endure there. But, you know, we've kind of, we, at their request, we ran it through statewide insurance. We weren't doing that initially because every experience, this is like for the last five or six sewer backups, if we're not aware of the situation, and it goes to our insurance agent, the insurance agent always rejects those, because we have to be aware of something and then not react to it for us to be liable. And, but at their request, we did go ahead and submit it to statewide. It was denied as we anticipated. So that kind of left us with two options. You know, or well, two options is either you deny the claim in full, or, you know, if you remember last, last year or two years ago, Mike, we implemented the sewer reimbursement policy.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, yeah.
And that, what that does, it allows a reimbursement of up to $5,000. We set a certain amount of money aside every year. And when we reach that cap, that amount is over. We set aside, you know, I think it's $30,000 a year in that plan. And that, but it's capped at $5,000 per occurrence per resident, or per residence. And so we advise that to Molly. And in her information, she's indicated that they're, obviously are requesting more than that. You know, that's not something we as a village have done. And, you know, I guess it's up to you guys how.
Yeah, so just to fill in some color. So the ServPro, the people that had to come in and like make sure that nothing crazy was going to be going in our house, was about $3,700. So that, by the time that bill is paid, which we have not had the money to pay for that bill, that won't leave us with much. And our floor, we had a finished basement with the snapped-together floor. That's in bits and pieces of cement floor, and pieces that are still there. And I have about this much drywall that's missing throughout the rest of my basement. The carpet had to get ripped up from our stairs. So this is all to say, I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all, and the fact that we know that we're being provided something that folks have not had in the past. But I just needed to sort of say out loud that thank you, I hope that you will come to the conclusion that we could receive some of that money. But it, the $5,000 cap won't fix our home and our home value. We bought our house for the finished basement. So now, if we were to turn around and sell it, we would be at a, not at a loss, but it would not be the value we would like it to be. And we're just normal, middle-class, young parents trying to make it work. And so we don't have any money saved to make the difference. So I just, we didn't sign just because I needed to say that out loud to people, to look people in the eye to say it out loud before we signed. So, thank you.
And we've always kind of acknowledged, and unfortunately, you know, and you're exactly right, and as far as these are difficult situations, and you have personal property that's lost, and things that, like you said, photo albums and decorations, and that just, it makes my heartache when I hear about stuff like that. And, you know, as we'll hear in the second one, you know, we, we are not, the village has kind of said, you know, we cannot be the insurance company for everybody. And we've always, even when we made that policy, we encouraged residents to at least look at adding sewer backup insurance as part of their plan. Some residents have that. And as we'll see later, even though, even when you have that, that may not be enough to cover everything anyhow. But that, you know, at least is, it's, I don't believe it's ever to make people whole or to completely fix everything, but it does help take off some of the edges of the, of those, those costs that you have. You know, I, I know the answer, the question's coming, Jerry, so, so, you know, so far, we've, we've paid out this year about 24, 2500? Twenty, 25 or 2600 out of that. Plus, we just awarded $2,000 at our last meeting to Emily. No, not Emily.
On Jefferson Street.
On Jefferson Street. So, you know, so it's probably about $4,500. But we still have, you know, the remainder of the year and everything to go. But that's, if you're wondering, how much have we paid out this year, that's, that's how much.
I was going to ask that.
Yep.
How much is in that account initially? How much do we put?
Thirty thousand. Thirty thousand, okay.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So Molly, I would mention, I appreciate how you presented yourself. It's good to work with people rather than against them. And I've sat here for 16 years, and these are never fun to have to deal with. And for a number of years, we didn't have that account. So people would come, the insurance company denied it because we were not negligent, and the people left unhappy. And we felt bad too, because nothing was done. So that's when Mike took us into the, this plan of the 30,000 budgeted, and a chance to pay at least some of it back. So it makes us feel a little better.
Yes, thank you.
Not always the homeowner feel as well as they'd like, but, so we'll see where this goes.
Yeah.
So, do we have any questions for Molly? Anyone?
Can I just, did you, did you have like a sewer backup valve installed?
So we have a sewer backup valve. We have a high-powered sub pump too, that got full of feces and toilet paper. So we had to replace that. But we had, I think the frustrating part, if you'll bear with me, is that we did everything right. This shouldn't have happened. And I think that, for me, again, as sort of like a young homeowner with little kids, we tried really hard to do everything right, knowing that we were sort of in a flooding area. We have drain tile. This should not have happened.
So how does that work? I thought that those backflow preventers were supposed to prevent this.
They do. I don't know if it was, you know.
The guy came out and double-checked, the rotor ruder guy, and said it was working. But it was, it was so compacted high up, it was coming through our drain floor too, the drain in our floor. It was coming up through there.
Yeah, the, you know, it, I don't know, I can't speak for the backflow preventer. I mean, backflow preventers are really just a flat valve that, so when the pressure from the downstream side comes back, it just closes that off. And we have them throughout the village, and quite honestly, a lot of them do work pretty well. You know, when we have our really serious rainfalls and storm, and sewers get surcharged a little bit all along, is it Prairie View Street? You know, there's a lot of them along there, and they continue to protect the businesses and, or the homes. So I'm not sure why it didn't work.
I think the universe has really heated us at that moment in time.
Sometimes, sometimes, quite honestly, you can get paper, and you can get other stuff that's, obviously in the sewage, that can, that can sometimes get in the way of that. I don't know what happened here in this situation. And the sump pump, yeah, those are, those are for clear water. They're for clear water. They're not for solids or anything like that. So I'm not surprised that that.
We had to get a new sump pump, yeah.
Went bad on them and everything.
Yeah, go ahead, Randy. So Molly, I read your, your comments, and to me, and I've had this actually happen, not here in the village, but in Madison. And I, I mean, it certainly appeared to me that you guys had, you did everything right. You tried to make calls. I mean, I come in, you even tried to get American Family to reimburse you. And, I mean, it's unfortunate. I think these things, it's nobody's fault, these things happen. But I think you guys, you did everything that you could.
Yeah.
Certainly, I don't think it, you know, you had all the right equipment. So I, I feel for you on that, but you guys did everything right, I think.
But you know how gross that is, to stand in your neighbor's, my poor husband is still having PTSD.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
I was just going to say, we've also had to clean the sewer in our basement. It's not good.
No, it was like that much.
Yeah, ours was never that bad, but.
Yeah, it wasn't pretty. No, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, so your recommendation, Jeff?
Well, my recommendation, I didn't know, I tried to contact Molly a few times. We've been paying, playing phone tag for the last week and everything. But, so that's why in my recommendation memo, it, you know, what we would like, what we are offering is kind of the maximum allowed under the plan, and that's the $5,000. But that, we've always made that contingent upon them, basically signing that this is, you know, a release of any kind of further claims against, you know, for this event. That's just standard. And Molly's report had indicated that they really weren't in favor of that. And so I didn't, you know, I kind of said if it, you know, in this discussion tonight, if that's what the board wishes to extend her as the offer, and she says no, then the recommendation is to follow the insurance recommendation, which is denial of claim. And I don't, I don't think that's a win-win on anybody's. If the board says, you know, $5,000 is what we can offer, and Molly says we're okay with that, and we're not.
We're not okay with it, but we're okay with it.
Understand the situation, then, then my recommendation would be to offer that with the contingency of the release.
Okay, so it sounds like a motion to offer the $5,000 with the contingency of a release. Anyone wish to make that?
I would make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Any for the discussion or questions? Molly, anything else you'd like to say?
No, this is wonderful. Thank you. It helps at least pay the ServPro people, so that there's not green stuff from.
We haven't voted yet.
Then I rescind my appreciation.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
My coyness just completely went out the window.
And I do want to reiterate, I mean, we've, I've dealt with a lot of people throughout the years of these kind of situations. I know how difficult they are, and I can just say Molly's been extremely pleasant, and always very cordial, and emails and everything else. And I, and as the person that kind of has to stand in the middle of this, it makes it, doesn't make it easy, but it does.
Yeah, you were in a no-win situation, and we knew it.
Right, right. But I appreciate that. That means a lot.
Thanks.
Thanks. We like to have people present the way you did.
No, thank you so much.
Speak swell of Oregon, so thank you.
David, you've got a hard act to follow.
You don't have your pink laser on.
Maybe you can borrow it. Okay, so I have to, I have to read this item, Dave, before we start. So, 4B, discussion with David Waite, 210 Bethel Court, regarding sewer backup claim and possible board action. Recommended motion, a motion to approve payment to David Waite at 210 Bethel Court in amount of $5,000 reimbursement cost associated with the cleanup, restoration, and reconstructive damage areas resulting from the sewer backup, which occurred on March 25, 2018. Payment should be contingent on Mr. Waite signing a release as prepared by the village. So let's go ahead and get a motion to start, since we're kind of in that territory.
I'll move that.
Thank you.
Second, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, you're up. Anything else you want to say, or?
No, I mean, I, it's hard not to follow that, right? That was pretty interesting, standing up in us, except for we were coming home from vacation, so we got to come home to that. The funny part about it is I walked in my house, and I'm like, oh my God, it smells in here. Like, what did we leave out? And I'm like, went to my 11-year-old son, I'm like, I'm like, do you smell that? No, I don't smell anything.
That's 11-year-olds.
That's 11. I don't smell anything. I'm like, oh, okay. Yeah, so then when I did finally go downstairs and saw it, I was like, oh my God.
Yeah, and it was a fairly freshly finished basement, I believe.
Yeah, we were actually.
In the process.
Yeah, in the process of finishing it, so. That was unfortunate, but our insurance covered a little bit. Learned a valuable lesson there. Make sure you know your insurance, and have a lot of it. And then, I mean, we should be pretty good.
Okay.
Not quite.
So, yeah, so David's claim was $13,847. His insurance company had covered up to the maximum amount that they had covered, which was $5,000. And leaving a balance of $8,000 and change, $8,847. And my recommendation was to cover the, up to the maximum $5,000.
So basically the same case we just had, right?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we actually didn't know it until Molly told us when it happened. So we were like, why is everything wet and smelly?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it wasn't that bad. I mean, it wasn't as bad as being home for it. I'm sorry.
Any further questions or discussion? So we have that motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. And again, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you.
When you spoke to your insurance agent, did, have you upped your amount?
I'm going to wait till I finish it, but yeah, I will.
So that's why, and I think that's, I would just encourage residents and out there, I know the paper puts this, but we always encourage residents, talk to their agents, and, and check their insurance coverages for, for something like that. Because a lot of people think that they have coverage until something like this happens.
I gotta be honest, I would have never, a first-time homeowner, you know, but in my old house, never had this happen in my growing up, never heard of it happening, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it was kind of a hard lesson learned.
It reminded me to call my own agent and confirm.
Tough, tough lesson, but.
Yeah.
And I would say there's even nuances, like we have American Family. There's nuances between the type of backup you're covered for, and so if you're covered for one and not another kind, so really dig in with your insurance, because we will not be giving you insurance. Get in the know.
So noted.
So I've, I've, I've sat through a number of these over those 16 years. And I still haven't checked if there's sewer backup insurance and so on, so maybe I'll get off the seat and do that now. And Alex is back there taking good notes for The Observer, and my guess is he'll have something good for, for our residents in the paper this week too, so. Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, item five is approval of minutes are none before us tonight. Item six, approval of vouchers. We have vouchers tonight, the amount of $206,625.41 for approval.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
I do not have any questions, unless Lisa would like me to ask questions. I could make some up, but I, I don't see a valid reason to ask. Go ahead, Chief.
Just note the date, the time.
Mr. Ballick had no questions.
Simple, simple stuff, right, Lisa?
Anybody else have questions? Okay, so roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Ballick?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Stetson?
Yes, that most are curious. Item seven is community input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the village board tonight? Judy, welcome.
I'm Judy Knutson. I'm the executive director of the chamber. And I'm just here to talk a little bit about the TICI TIF money that he's asking for. TICI has 87 employees as of today. They all, many of them, almost 60 of them, if not more, live in the village, and they pay taxes here. So it's a, it's a great thing for us to have TICI here, as well as the employees support our businesses, and they expand. I mean, once they expand, if they expand, there'll be many more employees. So I didn't get a chance to ask Jason how many more employees, if they do expand. But 87 is quite a few when he first moved here and started with 13. So I think that's a great thing. TICI is, well, as most businesses generally donate, and on a continual basis, to the schools, fundraising, and many other events, businesses are a major component of our vitality of our community. We should appreciate their ongoing support. We cannot expect new residential development to continue to fund the village's increasing taxes, as well as the school taxes. Businesses pay taxes, which helps residents control tax burdens, so they don't have to be taxed out of their homes. So our businesses are the ones that really are paying a lot of the taxes, and we're looking at to keep taxes down on our residents. That's one of the things, if we bring businesses into town, that's going to help a lot. So when we're talking helping people. So I hope the village thinks we are open for business and expanding, as well as bringing businesses into Oregon. I'm really looking for more businesses. I'm, I'm really wanting more businesses here, as well as the expanding the businesses, and it'll really, really help us. You may also want to check, if we don't do TIF, if we don't work with TIF, there's other communities who are offering TIF plus subsidized land. So all kinds of business, or communities are looking to bring businesses in, and we need those businesses as well. So as the chamber director, I'm really looking forward as for TICI to expand, and that they bring in more employees, more, we get more tax money in the end, and all that other things. So it's just the chamber director asking, please consider, think about what we're doing, how we can work with TIF, and the subsidized land, and things like that. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy. So item eight, proclamations and announcements. A is board comments. Anyone? Yeah, Amanda?
I just want to say I got a great tour of the wastewater treatment facility from Jeff Rau this past week. And, and I was very pleased. It's a very clean and well-kept facility, at least the areas that are supposed to be clean. There are certain areas that are supposed to be dirty, and that's okay. But it was a fascinating tour, and thank you for that.
It's fun, thanks. Glad you guys could see it.
Yeah, good. Anyone else? So item B, staff comments. Mike?
Just a reminder to village residents to take the brief survey, which is called a Greater Madison Vision. And you can find information on the village's web page and Facebook page. This is what the Capital Area Regional Plan Commission is doing, and they're asking, they're encouraging people to do it. This was on the agenda a couple of meetings ago, and we announced it, so.
Yeah.
The next item are the budget meetings, and trustee Ballick has asked me, wanted me to ask the board if, we usually start our budget meetings at 5:30 and have dinner at 5:00. And Jerry was asking me last week, could we have dinner early, or earlier, and start the meetings at 5 o'clock? Like, we're starting our meetings now. And so, you know, we'd have sandwiches in the back, or in the community room, like between 4:30 and 5:00. Versus starting at 5:30.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I know that I'll be able to get here before 5:00, or not much before 5:00.
Okay.
Can we eat during the meeting?
You can make that work, then.
People.
I can continue to eat before 5:00.
It's okay to eat once you get here, yeah.
Yeah.
It won't be Taco Bell, but.
I don't understand why not.
I should do that. I should do that one time, shouldn't I, Jenna?
She'd be here at 4:31.
Here's your chance. Give me your ear. What's your, uh?
I want all the tacos.
People do eat during the, during the meetings. It's not rude, so it's fine.
No, we do eat during the meetings, during the budget hearings, or budgets meetings, so.
So we'll start at 5:00.
Yeah.
The next item is, we're not going to have a personnel meeting next Monday night. We're going to have a short one before we have the joint meeting. We do have one person that I think is going, it has been initially denied her bartender's license, operator's license. She wants to come and talk to the committee, so that she, we will have it at 6 o'clock in this room, and then we'll adjourn, and then go to the senior center for the meeting at 6:30.
Okay. Any questions on those? Go to item nine, communication miscellaneous business, discussion of providing assistance to communities of maize and manateac cross plains and black earth in response to flooding.
This is Jeff.
Yeah, we've just, our engineer, one of our engineers brought it, brought it to our attention. Some of the communities over there were, now that the floodwaters have receded, they have sewer lines and stuff that they need help cleaning and everything like that. And we thought it would be a good idea to maybe extend to those communities up to about two days of time with our machine, and one of our staff members to go up there. Be about a week's worth of time total, maybe a little longer. And that, we would, we wanted to be able to send one of our staff up to operate the machine and stuff, but then kind of provide them that support for that time, if they were interested. And I've received two requests that they would be very interested. Basically, it's triaging, taking care of the worst stuff, not trying to take care of their maintenance stuff. And then possibly loan out our old jetter trailer, which is something that then their staff could use for a longer period of time.
And then, just two comments, additional comments. You know, when we've had floods, other communities have come and helped us, particularly the 1990 flood. We had a lot of people helping us back on, on long time already. And then I think, Jeff, we're going to keep track of our time.
Correct.
And we will, we will charge the communities only if they get fee my money.
Okay.
If they don't, we're not going to charge them.
Yeah.
If that's okay with the board.
That sounded right, everybody?
Okay. Good, thank you.
Thanks, good idea. Okay, item B, review of connection fees and impact fees. Any questions or comments here?
Is this just for information?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go to item C, discussion of possible action, appointing trustee Glish to Historic Preservation Commission, replacing trustee Ballick for a term ending in April 2019. And the recommended motion is to appoint Randy to the HPC. So I need that motion, please.
I'll move it.
Second.
You have to abstain.
I do.
Did you even let him finish?
So I'm going to abstain, obviously.
He has to abstain. I don't.
You're jumping off pretty fast. Okay, we have a motion second to appoint Randy to the Historic Preservation Commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item D, discussion of possible action, we got a review of receptionist job description and discussion of front office staffing. Recommended motion is to approve the receptionist's job description, authorize staff to hire a temporary employee in the receptionist's position to help during task collection, and advertise to permanently fill the position in 2019.
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. So who's up here?
Peggy, do you want to take a shot on this, or?
So we've attempted to hire an open position upstairs for quite some time, and not had any luck. The last position was the municipal accountant position. And after that, fell through, Lisa and I decided to talk to the front office staff to see what we thought the best needs for the office are. And this job description is what we came up with.
And I will add that I'm still committed to getting someone to help Lisa do some of her duties and provide a backup. And so at some point, we will come back to the board to talk about filling the accountant position. But I think Lisa and Peggy both agree that at this point, the, it was, the majority of the staff felt we needed to get a receptionist, and that's, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Questions or discussion? So we have the motion second to approve the receptionist's job description, and authorize staff to hire a temporary employee in the receptionist's position to help during task collection, and advertise to permanently fill a position in 2019. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks for bringing that forward to us. Item B, police department reports, we have the school resource officer, a summary of major crimes and K-9 reports. Any comments you want to make, Chief, or...
Nothing that I don't normally make, please feel free to ask me any questions if you have them. I do want to remind folks that are listening and for the paper that we did have an uptick of theft from automobiles, so please lock your vehicles at night, close your garage doors and entrances to your, your home, so we can probably curb most, if not all, of these, these entries, so. It's kind of a broken record. We have a huge social media campaign, we have officers going out placing cards on vehicles and door hangers on houses, so I just need to remind folks that a lot of these people aren't even from the area, they're coming in and, and doing these all over the, the area, so...
Thanks, Chief. Any questions on any of these reports? Anyone? Okay. We'll go to item F, discussion of possible action regarding influent pump replacement at wastewater treatment plant. Recommended motion is to purchase a pump from Xylem in the amount of $15,527.54. The funding is in the wastewater treatment plant's 2018 budget.
I'll make that one first.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is pump number four of five. We'll do pump number five of five next year. These are pumps that, they get the, you guys did not see these pumps, but they're the ones in the pump station over behind the police station over there, and they're the ones that pump the raw wastewater, so it comes through with everything in it, so they're probably our heaviest duty pumps, and they're at their end of their age. So we've been selectively replacing about one, one a year, one, two a year. This is a good price, and they're, we're matching pump for pump, so...
What's the life of a pump like this, Jeff?
Anywhere from, well, 10 to 15, 16 years, and that's about where they're at.
What determines 10 or 15?
It depends if one tries to suck a two-by-four through the pump or something. I mean, people put an amazing different variety of stuff down through a sewer, and sometimes they get some bad things, sometimes they just wear out.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Series, two-by-fours.
So we have the motion second to approve the purchase at the wastewater treatment plant of an influent pump from Xylem in the amount of $15,527.54. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item G, discussion of possible action regarding waterfall motel and shingle removal. The recommended motion is to approve the proposal from Copas and Sons Construction, the amount of $2,700 for removal and disposal recycling of shingles from the former waterfall motel, funding from the state trust fund alone.
I'll move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Well, we got to get the shingles off, we're gonna, the plan is to burn on the waterfall motel down on October 20th, that morning, and, but prior to doing that, we do require, when Chief, Chief requires us to have the shingles off, so I got some estimates for that. The next thing you'll see from me, probably our next meeting, will be the estimates for the concrete demolition of the remaining foundation after we're done.
So what happens to the residual material after the burn?
It'll get, it'll likely get broken up and then, and then hauled away, and then we'll backfill the, the hole with...
Oh, so you just leave, leave the remainder of the burn until they break up the concrete?
Correct, correct. I mean, it's just ashes and, and then some, I mean, my staff has removed almost all the metal, you know, like the radiators and those type of stuff, and we've, the couches are all gone, and there's really not much left in there. We're just preparing it for the burn right now.
Very good.
Other questions, comments? Yes, we have the motion second for approving $2,700 for removal and disposal recycling shingles from the former waterfall motel by Copas and Sons Construction. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item M, discussion of possible action on declaring surplus property. Recommended motion, declare the following village hall property as surplus, two Dell computers and one monitor, and two file cabinets. Need a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 10, report of committees in the planning commission meeting September 6, 2018. Trustee Carpenter.
Sure, what item? Discussion of possible action regarding consideration of amending the zoning classification of 137 South Main Street by placing the property in the neighborhood sign overlay zoning district. At the September 6th planning commission meeting, we unanimously asked the village board to consider adoption of ordinance 1812. So in our packet, we have, you can read the ordinance 1812, you can see a sample of the sign. I believe there are nine emails from residents in that area supporting the sign, and then Trustee Glish, who is spearheading the project, has a map of the South Historic Neighborhood boundary in there. And then on our table tonight, we do have one letter from property owners who had questions about it. So I'll, I'll make this first motion for the board to consider. I would make a motion that the, by a two-thirds vote, that we suspend the rules and waive the first and second readings at tonight's meeting.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.